Go by City Hall Standard Time.
That's right. There has to be some standard. You just have to pick it and go with it. All right, we'll get started. Welcome everyone to Santaquin City Planning Commission Meeting. It's Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. We're getting started right at 7:00 PM. All right. Would anyone here like to get us started with an inspirational thought or an invocation? I will accept dad jokes in lieu of a thought.
I've got an inspirational thought.
All right, all right.
Okay, it's one from Edgar Watson Howe, excuse me. He's an American novelist, newspaper and magazine editor from the late 19th and early 20th centuries. "We must be truthful and fair in the ordinary affairs of life before we can be truthful and fair in patriotism and religion."
Thank you, Commissioner Romero. That was better than a dad joke.
Okay.
All right. Would anyone like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight? All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. All right, there's the agenda. That's what we're gonna do. We'll go in that order. Unless anyone objects? Nope? Okay, that's what we're gonna do. But we'll start with the public forum because that's what we always do. There's no one here, but we gotta do it, right? So we'll open the public forum at 7:01 and invite any comments. Anyone wanna speak as a resident? Okay, then we will close the public forum at 7:02 and we can move right into Agenda Item Number One, Architectural Requirements in the Main Street Business District Zone.
All right. So this is, uh, this is something that kinda came about after an Architectural Review Committee review of a proposed site plan. Specifically, it's for a proposed Mountain America Credit Union building. Uh, that's on Main Street. As indicated in the memo, uh, they're proposing a 212 pitch for kind of a shed roof they have on the front of the building and that doesn't meet the, the language that's in our code right now. Specifically, the language in our code right now doesn't allow anything. It allows for flat roofs and allows for something with a minimum 512 pitch. So anything in between those two doesn't appear like it's, it's allowed. Uh, as I was kinda thinking about this in reviewing it, I wasn't quite sure what the purpose of that was. I know that there's, there's certainly a desire for kind of more of a historic look in, in the Main Street Business District Zone. In fact, the, uh, the code talks about the intent to evoke a downtown reminiscent of late 1800 period architectural forms. But as I was thinking about this, I thought, well, if they went to a 512 pitch instead of a 212, would it really make any difference at all, except that it would be a little bit taller, a little bit steeper and, and would it make really any difference at all? So, um, I asked the Architectural Review Committee members and, um, and they didn't see any, any issue with that. And so, uh, we addressed that, that application and, and thought, let's go through this process and, and, uh, I should say, we conditionally approved it. And one of the conditions with, was that this roofline requirement be addressed in some form. Uh, if, if, if it's not addressed, then we'll have to go back and, and have them address the pitch of that roof. I did include the, the look of that building, just so you kinda had a reference. Just as an example, obviously, this is more of a broad, broadly applied, uh, requirement. So, um, for purposes of tonight, I think if, if we can address that roof pitch, if, if you think that it's, it's something that's worthwhile changing, uh, then, then your recommendation of council could be to, to change it. If you think it's necessary, then your recommendation could be not to change it. I don't know if we necessarily need to go that deep tonight, but, uh, I did include the language that I just read about, um, evoking a downtown reminiscent of late 1800 period architectural forms. The reason I did that is, is that might be something to, to even consider in terms of that. You know, as, as, as a, as a planner and, and thinking about the development of Santaquin City, and particularly the, the downtown area, if you will, uh, you know, we've just expanded our Main Street, uh, to five lanes. It is a highway, uh, state highway, and, and I know that there's a desire to have, have that there, but uh, with more of an auto-centric, auto-oriented road, uh, it's a little bit harder to, to, to reach the, the kind of vision and, and goals that sometimes cities will have for a Main Street. Uh, if there's something that we want to have there, that's more of a walkable Main Street, that may be something. I know in the past, we've talked about, you know, if that, if something like that were to happen, maybe, maybe off of the, the highway would be a better place for it, maybe 100 South. Our City Hall is here on 100 South. Maybe there's, there's kind of some plans and visions for, for something that's more pedestrian oriented on 100 South. But without getting down that rabbit hole, which I think could be a worthwhile discussion at some point in the future, when, in more of a uh, general plan or visionary type of a discussion. For purposes of tonight, we've just brought forward the roof pitch, um, uh, proposal. The last thing that I'll say that the ARC sometimes faces that can be kinda tricky is there's a lot of businesses, which I know the mayor and council have a higher priority on, on economic development and trying to attract businesses to come to our community. Uh, and sometimes these businesses, they have a corporate look that they're required to have. And sometimes those corporate looks, uh, don't really work in harmony with, with the architectural requirements that we have. We, we do our best and, and, uh, you know, I'm actually quite proud of, of some of the, the buildings that have been built within the last five years or so. Obviously, you know, around Macy's is not Main Street Business District Zone, but I think there's been a lot of effort put into those buildings that there's kind of a cohesive look with, with some of the materials and colors and finishes and light fixtures and all that. And so, but for purposes of the Main Street Business District Zone, um, at this point, we're, we're just asking that you consider the, the roofline requirement and, um, yeah, I'm happy to discuss or answer any questions you have about this proposal.
Thanks, Jason. Um, can you explain how those roof pitch numbers work? Is that like rise over run or something?
It is, yep.
Okay.
So for every, in, in like the case of a 212 pitch, I think for every, for every 12 feet, it rises two feet.
I'm assuming the south elevations are what's will be facing Main Street?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
So.
So it looks flat from, from that perspective anyways, yeah.
Right. And obviously, some of that slope is there probably for, for water runoff of the roof. Uh, you know, flat roofs, which we do have those on our Main Street, which are allowed right now. They do have a little bit more of that, that 1800s Main Street look, if you will. They usually have parapet walls that hide some of the, the utilities, the HVAC and stuff on there. And then there'll usually be a little bit of a a very small pitch behind that parapet wall to, to get water where it needs to go, uh, so it can drain off of the roof. But, uh, yeah, it's a good question.
I mean, unless you were looking at it from the side or the rear, you wouldn't notice a difference, right? It, from the front, it, it would meet, I think, the intent of the code as it's written. But I don't have a problem with changing the roof pitch. I think that's a reasonable change. While you guys are thinking about this, we do need to do a public hearing. So, let's do on it for a minute and we'll do the public hearing now. Open the public hearing at 7:08.
Show us the draft and what the actual changes in the code.
Sure. There's a lot in here because that code is big.
And maybe something that I'll say as, as Aspen's turning to that. Uh, there was another one that, that I thought while we're in here doing that, that, that I should address. So I'm glad that, that Commissioner Hoffman brought this up. Obviously, what I just talked to basically would take the, the, the language that says slope roof shall have a minimum 512 pitch. And then keep, you know, the language that says gabled end shall face toward adjacent public streets. Kind of in conjunction with that, up above, you'll, you'll see that, that hip roofs are not allowed. Now, for those who don't understand architectural jargon, a hip roof, I think probably the best example I could give you of a hip roof is like the, the post office, where basically the roofline comes down to the, the, the bottom of the roof or, or the eaves. So it's basically a lot of roof that you see. Um, and I think kind of with the intent down below in D, I think if a hip roof has a gabled end to it, if it has gables there, so you think of like UCCU, it's really kind of a hip roof, but it's got the gabled ends that, that dress up that roofline a little bit more, so it's not so much roof that you're seeing. But as I was looking at, at these requirements, I realized that we actually have a handful of buildings that do have hip roofs. So instead of just saying hip roofs aren't allowed, uh, I think the intent was maybe hip roofs without a gabled end are not allowed, where it's just a lot of roof. Uh, so like another good example is our, our own public safety building. It's actually a hip roof, but then around the, the edges of, of that roof, there's, there's some gabled ends that dress up that roofline and, and, you know, so it's not as much roof that you're seeing. So if, if we need to, we can, we can pull it up and show you kind of some examples, but I think that's what the intent is there. Um, but obviously hip roofs sometimes are, are appropriate and necessary. I think it's just not, not putting the focus on, on hip roofs and, and dressing up the facade a little bit more, so it, it looks nicer.
Did you see what you wanted to see?
Yeah.
Okay.
So none of the old style pizza huts are allowed.
Apparently.
So.
There's not many of those around. A few left.
And again, without overhauling that code, obviously trying to work with what we have, I don't, I don't think there's a need to overhaul the code, but I think with some of these minor adjustments, I think it'll allow us to, to work with applicants a little bit more. And I think it still provides the intent to, to have some good-looking buildings. Again, maybe a, a more deeper, broader conversation we can have is, is about that, that desire to look like an 1800s Main Street. Again, I have my thoughts there and I'd be curious to hear what your thoughts are, but we don't need to necessarily dive in that, into that tonight. That might be more appropriate for another time.
Sounds good. Okay, now let's do the public hearing. I'll open it at 7:12 and invite comments. Okay, we'll close the public hearing at 7:12 and I'll invite comments. Anyone concerned about changing the roof pitch?
I, doesn't, me either.
No concern. Okay, I think we're ready to move forward then.
I'll make a motion to recommend that the proposed amendment to the architectural requirements in the Main Street Business District Zone be approved as written.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Wade. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Romero? All right, any further discussion before we vote? Let's vote. Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Moke?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry to turn it on.
That's forwarded with a positive recommendation and it is unanimous. Very good. All right, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Requirements for Masonry Fencing Along Double-Froned Edge Lots.
Okay, uh, we propose that we change the code that if double-frontage lots cannot be avoided, a fence shall be required. We want this fence put in place at the same time subdivision improvements would be constructed to prevent like construction vehicles using both accesses as well. And then we request that it's a masonry-style fence, just so that they can't go in and change vinyl fences are a lot easier to change than masonry fences. So it just really reinforces the not having double access.
Okay, is that the primary concern? I was just curious, like what, what is the concern we're addressing here?
I mean, we occasionally will have subdivisions. We have one right now. This obviously couldn't apply to that because there's level of vesting that they have. But, you know, our code says that double-frontage slots are discouraged, uh, and that they should be avoided, but there's sometimes where double-frontage slots are, are make sense and are, are kind of the, the best option for a subdivision. So, uh, you know, we, I think we're, we're open to double-frontage lots, but I think the, like Aspen mentioned, the, the dual access consumption tends to be problematic. Particularly in subdivisions where, where the, the double-frontage might be on, on more of a collector or, or an arterial road. So for instance, think of Summit Ridge Parkway. If there were people that were accessing their, their properties off of Summit Ridge Parkway, that would create problems with, you know, with the, uh, the flow of Summit Ridge Parkway. Uh, that, that's kind of a different situation where, you know, with the development agreement, that was something that was put in there in place, but there's that masonry fence that goes all along that, that, uh, arterial road. So similarly, when, when these double-frontage lots are, are before us and, um, and we have to consider, you know, we really encourage them to have fencing and, you know, plat notes that say no access from, from the, you know, uh, that side of the lot. But I think having that masonry fence will, will really kind of lock that in place and, and, and make it, you know, more of a, kind of a permanent thing rather than, you know, a vinyl fence that you could easily, easily take panels out and, and, you know, create a driveway or, you know, construction access or things like that, that, that would get in the way of the function of an arterial road.
That makes sense.
Is this a requirement for like the developer to put in the fence, not the person that buys it? Okay.
But it would apply equally to someone like subdividing a lot, right?
Right. So whoever's developing it.
Yeah, exactly.
It would just be part of like the subdivision review process?
Okay.
And, and like Aspen said, subdivision improvements. So when they put in their utilities and curb gutter sidewalk and, you know, water lines and stuff like that, we would be requiring this fence as well.
Okay. So let me just, I'm trying to like picture this, sorry. So double-frontage road is like, so we, I'm, I'm thinking about like in my subdivision, there's, there's like Bluff Street and then it goes into a cul-de-sac off Bluff. And there's houses that have access to Bluff if they don't have a fence up. So they would have, so the developer would have to put a, a, a fence, not a vinyl fence, on the back, so that, because they have access to the front, but they don't, you don't want to have access to the back.
It's like if there was like a row of houses and there was like Oak Street and then in their backyard, it was like Pine Street or something. We don't want them to have access to both. So all the houses would have to face Oak Street and then there'd be a fence running along Pine Street.
Okay. That's what I was thinking.
What about the measure between the two? Do they have to have a one on the one side?
So don't, don't confuse this with corner lots.
Yeah, that's, I'm.
Yeah, corner lots are gonna have a primary frontage and a secondary frontage. We're talking about lots where
it's two separate.
both the front of the house and the back of the house are on the road.
Hmm.
Yeah. So you use the example of, of Bluff Street. I don't see any double-frontage lots there.
I'm honestly thinking about right across from my house.
It'd be like Rain Tree Lane, all those homes that are between the frontage road and Rain Tree Lane, those are double, double-frontage lots. And so like, like we did again through a development agreement, uh, there is a masonry fence that runs all the way along Highland Drive or the frontage road.
Right.
And that prevents, you know, people from having driveways to their backyard.
Yeah.
So what about looking on, if you're looking at Bluff, there's, trying to think, it, there's one that goes into an actual cul-de-sac.
Salisbury Court?
Yeah, I think so.
Yep, so.
So it would, they are facing Salisbury Court, so everyone in that cul-de-sac is facing it. So if they were sort of come through after we changed this, they would be required to put in that fence on Bluff for those that are facing Salisbury Court.
Yeah, that, that, that was one, I wonder if that, that was one that kind of, I mean, there's, there's the one that's on the corner and it's kind of got a really large corner that's.
Yeah.
Can we pull this up on the map?
Sure.
Thanks.
I'm just wondering
So.
how advantageous this is in a local road. I can see it for arterials and collectors.
Right.
And then larger roads, but on a local road.
Right.
I don't know if it's, it makes that big of a difference.
And that's a good point. Maybe that's something that we add to this, that it's, it's only when it's along a collector or arterial.
We could list the, the types of roads because they're all listed in our, in our plans, right?
Right.
On a local road, I don't know if it's a, that big of an issue.
Right.
Does, does staff see it? Is it that big of an issue on a local road?
Yeah, that's a good point.
So this is the only one that faces the driveway and is facing this way.
Arturials and collectors, I definitely see them.
So Commissioner, uh, Moke, I, I think the one there on the corner of Salisbury and Red Cliffs, that's really kind of a interesting corner lot, but the one next to it could probably be considered kind of a double-frontage lot. And I think Commissioner Hoffman brings us, brings up a good point that, that there's probably not as big of a deal with that. Uh, particularly when it's just one, but when it's a whole row of double-frontage lots, I think that's where we're particularly, uh, you know, that's the objective that we're trying to accomplish with this, this ordinance is, is those long stretches of double-frontage lots.
Okay.
On more of a collector or arterial like.
Yeah.
I'm more just trying to figure out what exactly they would be putting in, but I'm, I got it now. Catching on, I'm slow, but.
You're fine.
Yeah, in the case that we're working with right now, it's, it doesn't have a development agreement. In fact, it's a proposed standard subdivision. So sometimes we can, we can, uh, figure these things out when there's a development agreement or there's kind of a master plan for what's, what's happening there. But when it's a standard subdivision and they, they want to incorporate homes on more of a collector arterial road and they want to have that double-frontage, which makes sense, uh, that's where it's, you know, well, we don't allow double-frontage lots, or are we discouraged double-frontage lots, but, but if there's a fence, then, then, you know, I think the city is, is more open to that. Uh, so instead of kind of asking and trying to, to see if the, the developer's willing to do that, we wanted to, to really put, put that as a requirement in the code. So there's not, not that kind of awkward trying to, yeah, we're okay with the double-frontage lot if, you know, we're not able to require it. It's kind of a, you know, almost a kind of a negotiation, uh, during the DRC to, to, you know, get that separation that, that will prevent the, 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 you know, second access issues.
Yeah. And you're more worried about it like affecting traffic than.
That's what it's for, is traffic.
Right.
So I, I think I would be fine with this change as long as it was everything but local road.
Yep.
We could, we could do highways, collectors, arterials, everything but the local roads. I would be for this, yeah.
So what I'm hearing and maybe a good way to, to, to tweak this is, is it could read, when double-frontage lots occur on, on roads above a local road, road, masonry-style fencing shall be required along one of the furnages as determined by the DRC. Fencing will be a subdivision improvement required prior to the issuance of a building permit.
It should be along the road that's the higher classification.
Yeah, because all of our roads, all of our local roads are labeled as such, correct? So it would be easy to delineate the locals from everything else?
Right. And we have it by, as determined by the DRC. There might be some weird situation where it might be different. So, but I, I think that's a good point that that's really the intent is, is to, to put it on, on more of those busier roads that are.
Because like that example you showed us with that, in that cul-de-sac, I don't have a problem with that one.
Right.
So. That's my opinion.
I like it. One other thought on this, um, I'm just thinking from like a visual point of view and maybe a pedestrian point of view. If you're walking down a sidewalk that's right up next to a masonry fence and the sun's beating down on you, that's kind of a miserable experience. And as I say this, I know there's maybe not a great way to address it, but is there any way to say that there should be some sort of landscape element on the street side of that fence to kind of soften that a bit? I'm not suggesting lawns certainly, or flower beds, or anything that's not gonna get maintained, but something low maintenance like a handful of trees or something, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I guess that's tricky because like I say, in the, in the instances where we have a development agreement, there's usually, you know, a trail or some sort of a pedestrian corridor. But in the case of a, uh, like a standard subdivision that we're working, working with right now, there's, there's not that much right of way to where there's room for landscaping. It's really just a sidewalk on, on the other side of the fence. So I, I, I understand your point, but, but, uh, uh, yeah, the, the right of way uh, with available to us for extra landscaping is, is probably not gonna be an easy thing to, to always, you know, have the, the option to, to do something like that with.
Right.
I don't have any other questions. I think, I think it makes sense. I, I agree with that.
Like Jason said, they already do it with a lot of areas that have development agreements. This is just to cover the smaller subdivisions I think that do not have a development agreement.
Yeah.
Right, Jason?
Yeah, we, I'm just trying, I, I agree with, with your comment. I'm just trying to make sure that there's not a situation where, where that local road thing would, you know, because some of the roads may be local now, but we're, we're kind of planning ahead for, for what it could be in the future.
Well, once that classifications change, then it would, with a big development, you would change that classification to turn it into a collector or a arterial road, I would assume.
Maybe, right?
We will, but at the time of the subdivision, if it's still local and, and, and maybe it, it should be upgraded, you know, it's, it's hard to, you know, like hold your subdivision application. We need to go change our, our transportation master plan to, to account for this, this road. And I, I don't have the, the collector arterials roads, uh, you know, memorized well enough to know. But, I mean, the, the current example that we have right now is we have a subdivision called Bella Vista, uh, that's on 400 East. And so 400 East is the one, and I'm pretty sure 400 East is a collector.
Yeah.
So I'm, I, I think it'll work there, but I'm just trying to think of other situations where, where, uh, you know, it might, might be different. But I'm, I'm good with that language. I think, I think that, that is, you know, good intention in, in that comment.
Maybe because as it's written, as the furnage is as determined by the DRC, maybe that gives some leeway of determining the road issue.
Yep.
Okay, well, we do have a public hearing on this agenda item tonight, so let's, uh, do that now.
There you go.
Give everyone a chance to mull this over for 15 seconds. So we will open the public hearing tonight at 7:26 and of course invite any comments. That was about 15 seconds. All right, we'll close the public hearing at 7:26. Okay, are we sort of all leaning in the same direction?
So.
Okay. Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Good.
Oh, good. Commissioner Wood, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed, proposed code amendment to require fencing on double-frontage lot, except if the, if the, um, lot fronts a local, a roadway designated as local on both sides. Does that work?
I think so.
Yep. Very good. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hoffman. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Moke. Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, let's vote. Commissioner Moke?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Okay, that is forwarded with a positive recommendation and it's unanimous. Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Three. This is a plat amendment in the Santaquin Peaks Industrial Subdivision.
Okay, like Trevor said, this is a site plan in the Santaquin Peaks Industrial Lot. Um, it's for Silver Creek Design. They just went under review at DRC. Um, they're just combining lots seven and eight, which would create a total of approximately two acres. Uh, this is the proposed location. And then this is the plat amendment after it would be combined.
Can you show the seven and eight again, please?
Yes. Seven and eight are located down at the bottom right here.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions regarding a change?
That's pretty easy.
Very straightforward.
Yeah.
I think we've already done that for one of the lots, haven't we?
And just for reference, the industrial zone doesn't have any like land area requirement, so.
Right. Okay, concerns, questions, last call? All right, would anyone like to make a motion on this?
I will.
Agenda item, please.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the plat, the plat amendment for the Santaquin Peaks Industrial Park Lot Seven and Eight.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Romero. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Wade. Any further discussion? All right, in that case, let's vote. Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Moke?
Yes.
Okay, that plat amendment is approved and it's unanimous. Okay, that plat amendment is approved and it's unanimous. That brings us close to the end. We need to approve the minutes from our last meeting on July 22nd, 2025. Is there any discussion on those minutes? And if not, does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
I will.
Alright, motion to approve by Commissioner Romero. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hoffman?
I wasn't here, so I can't.
That's okay. Alright, all in favor of approving those minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved and it's unanimous. That does bring us to the end. What else do we need to talk about?
Maybe just one update for you that you'd be interested in. This morning, if you remember the last meeting that you had, there was the public hearing from the Fraser family. This is regarding the cows. I talked to her this morning and she essentially retracted her application for a zone change, so it's not gonna be going to city council. So, I don't know if she, they saw the writing on the wall or they were discouraged by the recommendation or how that went. But I just thought I'd let you know that that's, application's now dead and it's not gonna be moving forward anymore, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just an update on that one.
Okay, Commissioners, anything we need to talk about? Alright, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn at 7:31.